Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask any individuals in the audience who are here to be sworn in to a city board, commission, or committee to please join me in the well. So if you're here to be sworn in, Marty wins? No, you're not getting sworn in, Marty. Wonderful. Um, yeah. We gotta do this. Come on down. It's like the Price is Right. Let's go. Keep it coming. How are you? How are you? Thank you, thank you. Ron, Michael, how you doing? Come on in, alright. Okay, is there anyone else? Anyone out? Can you get them? My sister. Tiffany. 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 Tiffany, this is Sister Milagros, just so you know.
Que gusto, que gusto, que gusto, gracias.
God bless you, Marty. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all, Rose. Thanks for being here, I know. Thank you. Send me something. Thank you, Rose. Rose, I'll call you, maybe Friday. Okay. Tiffany. Okay, okay, everybody. Okay. Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, these individuals have been appointed by the city council to serve on, we just need to get everybody line, to serve on the city's boards, commissions, committees, or corporations. We appreciate the willingness to volunteer your time to serve the city in this manner, and we will ask that you make decis-- or wait. And all we ask is that you make decision, decisions that you feel are in the best interest of the city of Corpus Christi. So today, we have with us, and if you'll please raise your hand when I call your name, Monica Montalvo, who will go on the Animal Care Advisory Committee, Eric Evans, Corpus Christi Bee Corporation and Corpus Christi Business and Job Development Corporation, um, can y'all? Mark LaRue, Corpus Christi Bee Corporation and Corpus Christi Business and Job Development Corporation, Sulek Shauna, Sulu, MODAC Ethics Commission, Rick Barretta, Ethics Commission, Joan Adams Wolf, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and Michael Budd Airport Zoning and Planning Commission. So if you'll all please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of a member of the board to which I have been appointed and upon which I'm about to enter and will do the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and of this city. So help me God. Congratulations. Congratulations. Glad you're there.
So if you need to adjust the microphone, you can, and you'll just say, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you need the Texas Fudge for any reason, you'll just flip it over. Okay? I just think the same thing, or you're gonna just say, now join me.
Yeah, yeah.
How would you like to say whatever's most comfortable?
You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC 311 app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the 311 app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit Submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with 311. Download the MyCC 311 app today.
Get ready and gear up to Conquer the Coast, the ultimate cycling event along the Corpus Christi Bay. Join us Saturday, September 16th at Whataburger Field. Register today and choose from three different routes. Take a stroll on the 10-mile course down Ocean Drive, push yourself a little further with a 21-mile ride to the Corpus Christi Naval Air Station, or challenge yourself with an enduring 66-mile journey across the Harbor Bridge. It's the ultimate adventure you don't want to miss. Let's ride at Conquer the Coast.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to City Hall and to Council chambers. Thank you for being a part of city government today. I'd like to invite Pastor David Bendit from Rock City Church to give our invocation.
Thank you and welcome to everybody. Great to see you all today. It's an honor to be the last one to pray on this old outdated microphone.
You're right. That's right.
A lot of people prayed on this microphone over the years, so let's pray. Jesus, thank you so much for our city. Thank you that you love this city. Thank you that it belongs to you, Lord. That you gave your life for an inheritance, and that we're part of that inheritance. Thank you for the mayor, all these councilmen and our councilwomen. Thank you for our city manager, city attorneys, the secretary. Lord, thank you for everyone that gives of their time and their life and their talents to serve and care for this community. Thank you, God, for the shepherds and the pastors, thank you for the people, and thank you for our children and families. Thank you, Lord, that what we're building will leave a legacy for many generations to come. And I pray, Lord, that every decision that we make, when it comes to spending, when it comes to legislation, when it comes to all the different departments, when it comes to everything that we put our hand to, I pray, Lord, that we would be mindful of the future. And I thank you so much, Lord, that we get to be a part of building something that will stand the test of time. Lord, I pray that you would guard this city if you're not watching, Lord, and guarding, we're wasting our time. Our talents, the money, the jobs, all that means nothing if you're not here with us. So I invite your presence, Lord, here, and as we move over to the RTA building for a season, and they remodel here, Lord, I pray, God, that your hand of protection, provision, and wisdom would be upon us. Thank you for driving back darkness, rescuing the children, changing the lives that are even perpetrating darkness and violence and addiction in our community. I pray that they would be born again and saved, and I pray, Lord, that you would give us all wisdom of how we can do that. Thank you for the first responders, thank you for our law enforcement, and thank you so much, Lord God, for watching over them and keeping them safe as they're out on the streets. And today, Lord, as decisions are made, discussions are made, Lord, as new commissioners were sworn in, I thank you, God, that your presence and your heart is with us in everything that we do and every decision that we make. We love you so much, Lord, and we're so thankful for you. Have your way in our lives and in this community. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas flag will be led by Savannah Rose Serta. She is a senior at Mary Carroll High School, Student Council Vice President, and President of the Texas Association of Future Educations, educators. Yeah, go Tigers.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much. Ms. Huerta, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palet Wajardo.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barretta.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley. Yes, he's here. Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. And before moving on to our city manager's comments and, on operations, we are going, if it isn't obvious, we are celebrating and kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'd like to read that proclamation. "So whereas each year Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was enacted into law on August 17th of 1988. And whereas the story of Hispanics in America is the story of America itself. And the Hispanic community's values, love of family, a deep and abiding faith, and a strong work ethic, are America's values. And whereas from those who trace their roots to America's earliest days to those who recently came to the United States carrying nothing but hope for a better life, Hispanics have always been integral in our national story. And America is a richer and more vibrant country because of the contributions of Hispanics. And whereas Hispanics have played a vital role in the moments and movements that have shaped our country, and they've enriched our culture and brought creativity and innovation to everything from sports to the sciences, from the arts to our economy, and have made invaluable contributions through their service to our country. And whereas the rich ethnic heritage of Hispanic Americans gives us cause to celebrate because it is a proud and colorful portion of our nation's heritage reaffirming our belief in the principles of liberty and democratic government. And the future of Corpus Christi is inextricably linked to the future of our Hispanic community, and our city thrives on the diversity and ingenuity of all of our people. So now therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the mayor of the city of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim, September 15th through October 15th of 2023, National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Corpus Christi, Texas, and I encourage all citizens to observe the month, observe the month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs." So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to Section F, which is the city manager's comment and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. We are going to begin today with a short presentation. Heather Holbert, our Assistant City Manager, is going to give us a quick informational briefing on what is known now as Proposition A. And we want to just make sure the community begins to learn about this proposition. It'll be on the ballot on November 7th. And just to let the council and the community know, we are organizing ourselves to get our educational material ready and be presented to the community so they can better learn about Proposition A. And Heather has just a few slides this morning to go over the details of Proposition A, so I'll turn it over to Heather.
Sure. Good morning. I'm Heather Holbert, Assistant City Manager. So we'll walk through a lot of this information. You have seen numerous times if we walked through this, but just a reminder, we do have Proposition A, which will be going to election on November 7th of this year. And the purpose for this is to repurpose or expand the use of 1/4 cent of the sales tax. Currently, it is, so today, we have 1/8 cents that goes to the arena for maintenance and operations and debt service, and 1/8 cent that goes to the seawall for the same. And so what the proposed expansion is, is that not only will that sales tax be able to be used for the arena and for the seawall, but then we will also be adding industrially commercial streets, parks, regional parks as defined by city council, the airport, and then other aspects of the conventions that are complex. So we're going from two uses to basically six or multiple uses. So there's been a lot of concern about the seawall, so the seawall will continue to receive funding through the Type A sales tax, since we are including that in that use. And we will go into this repurposing with a $14 million reserve that can be used for any type of large projects that are needs for the seawall. And then looking at the regional parks, we have defined the regional parts to include Bill Witt, Cole, Commodores, Labonte, Parker, Salinas, and West Guth. And so this is a map of where those parks are located. They're pretty evenly spaced across the city and used in the different areas of the city. And then commercial and industrial streets, so the funding will be used for street projects in support of economic development in commercial and industrial areas. And so just to note that they cannot be used per state statute, it cannot be used for residential streets, it can only be used for streets in connection with economic development. And then at the Corpus Christi International Airport, we will be using the funding, our proposed use funding, for attraction and support of new destinations to and from the city. So this would include the minimum revenue guarantees for those new routes, along with any type of capital improvement that is needed to support those routes. And that could be something such as expansion of ticket counters, baggage handling, security, things along those lines. And then lastly, the funding will be used for expansion and improvements of the convention center complex. And so city council did define that complex to include the seawall, the arena, the convention center, and Salina Auditorium, and a new headquarters hotel. And so the spending will be used for this, for this purpose of expansion and improvements to that complex. So that does conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I don't think we have any questions. Heather, thank you so much.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Heather, for that. And Mayor and Council, I'm going to take an item out of order here because we do have one of our executives who's sitting in the audience, and we want to get him back to work since he only has a few days left to work. And so I want to talk to you all about Paul Bass. He's retiring. He's, as we know, our Assistant Director for Solid Waste, and he has spent 24 years with the city. And so we want to recognize him and his service. He announced his retirement last month, and Friday, September 22nd, will be his last day with the city. It's with sadness that we say this, but we're also happy that he'll enjoy the next chapter of his life. He's here today with his wife. And let me just give you some background. Paul began working for the city in 1988 as a budget analyst. We know we just got done the budget, and so Paul was one of those budget persons back in the day, but over the years, he rose through various positions and ultimately made it into Solid Waste, where he was a Solid Waste Superintendent, and then the Assistant Director of Support Services since 2017. He's been in that role. Paul has provided financial and statistical analysis for the Solid Waste Management Department since 2005. He has forecasted the impact of fee increases and program changes for the department. With changes in the city leadership over the past years, Paul has been able to adapt in providing varying requirements in budget preparation, financial, statistical, and performance analysis, not only for the city council but for the community. And Paul currently oversees about 100 full-time employees in administration, brush collection, refuse collection, recycling, and in our Solid Waste Call Center. And during his time, Paul has contributed significantly in supporting many initiatives in the department to include, though, the solid waste single stream recycling in 2011. He was one of the architects in helping develop that policy proposal for the community. The program changes include transitioning then from what was twice a week garbage to once a week collection for garbage, and then once every other week for recycling, so that we're a recycling community. So recently, with our executive team meeting, I asked Paul if he was going to be buying an RV and kind of cruising across the country, like a lot of retirees do, but he said, "No, Peter, I'm not doing that." We plan to go to Germany to spend time with his grandchild, and so he'll begin to do that with he and his wife. And Paul, we're going to miss you. We have a few things for you. I'm going to have you come up to the microphone if you can, and say a few words to the council.
Paul Bass, 23 years.
The staff wrote in there, "Time is precious. Waste it wisely."
Waste, that's cute.
So I do appreciate the recognition. It's been a great career, and I appreciate Peter's support, the executive team, Neiman and David, our director, Philip, my associate there at Solid Waste, another assistant director. I mean, I think we have a strong team, and there's so many good things on the horizon with the gas-to-energy project and composting and a lot of, you know, good things happening with the city. I'm going to miss that, I'm going to miss Peter and the leadership and confidence he gave me. So I get a big charge out of coming into work every day, and you just can't imagine. I'm kind of getting choked up, I guess, here, but it's a good feeling to see the crews going out. I've got maybe 60 guys and women going out in the field every day and getting home safely, and that's the main charge, so it's exciting. I won't belabor this much, but I do appreciate your support now and in the past, so thank you.
Paul, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done.
Okay, Mayor, we do have Joey Jewell that's here from our Visit Corpus Christi. There was a request from the council to have a presentation from him, so if we want to bring him up at this point. Brett Otting, our president and CEO of Visit Corpus Christi, is going to do a quick introduction of Joey Jewell. Joey Jewell is the Executive Director of the Sports Commission. Brett and his team are instrumental in creating for the city, so I'll turn it over to Brett.
Thanks, Peter. I won't take too much time, but I do see Councilmember Rera and Suckley. It's exciting that you're going to be visitor center staff for us, with your shirts on, so look forward to the shift today. So about this time last year, we introduced Joey and introduced the Corpus Christi Sports Commission. Joey's the executive director. He's a Texas boy, University of Texas Longhorn, with a degree in sports management. We found him, though, in Oregon. He was looking for a way to get back, and we're very happy he is here. The biggest thing, I'll take away, I don't want to steal his thunder, but the work that Joey and him and his team are doing, to use a sports analogy, they haven't hit the ground running, they're sprinting, and doing a lot of great work. Sports is a huge segment that we have not been capitalizing on in the future, so we're very excited to have Joey and his team doing some great work, and I'll turn it over to Joey and let him show everything that he's doing to make an impact on the community.
Morning, Council, and thank you for your time today, and Peter as well. I appreciate this opportunity to give everyone an update on what we've been doing. Brett's right, it's been a little over a year now. I got here in June of 2022, so I'm sure all of you are pretty curious to see what we've been up to and how we've been progressing, but I also want to make sure that I assure everybody of the transparency of what we're doing and to make sure that you guys know that we're also operating within a responsible manner. So in the one year that we've been here, we've set the foundation for the department, which will ensure future success in sports tourism while also hitting all of our hotel room night goals. So for those, and Peter and both Brett have already given a little bit of an introduction to me.
commission itself actually does, being advocacy, marketing, sales and services, community investment, and convener of sports stakeholders. Next slide. Here's a list of the accomplishments that we've done over the past year. The destination analysis piece, that was when the Huddle Up Group came in, and we wanted to do a benchmarking of where we were and where we want to go as a destination in regards to sports tourism. Next is the creation of the sales and services processes. Luckily, we've had a convention sales team here, so the sales processes were pretty easy for us to just kind of continue moving forward with, but we didn't have a sports services process. And so we've hired a full-time staff member in May to help do that, and she's already gone around in the community, building those relationships, figuring out which vendors we have locally to service a lot of these events, what we get them through, and then the actual process of getting all of this information, these opportunities, to our local businesses to help do that. So we're still in the process, but we're getting closer each and every day. I'm going to skip down, I'm going to skip one and go to the creation of a sports council. We have 13 members on there chaired by Brady Ballard of the Corpus Christi Hooks. He's also a Visit Corpus Christi board member. That council will always be chaired by a Visit Corpus Christi board member. I think it's also important to note for this group that this is a working advisory council. This is not a council that has any official decision-making ability over the sports commission or Visit Corpus Christi. Robert Dodd from Parks and Rec is also a member of that council, and we're thrilled to have him, and he's already provided a lot of expertise as well as advice for us in a number of different ways and projects that we're looking forward to do in the future. The two big events that I kind of want to mention here also is the American Cornhole League National, which we talked about earlier this year. The room nights and the direct spend economic impact were fantastic for us, but I really want to highlight those two 30-second commercials on ESPN2. For us, we went to our first conference and trade show in December, and when I started letting people know where, that I'd moved from Eugene, Oregon, I'd come down to Corpus Christi, one of the things from both planners and other destinations alike was, where's Corpus Christi? What is it? And I said, "Well, you know, we're the coastal destination for Texas." And Texas is the number-two producer of sports tourism in the country outside of Florida, and so they needed to know. They needed to know that we had a beach destination, and we're the primary spot for the coast and the beach destinations within the state of Texas. And we're positioning ourselves to be the Gulf Coast capital for sports tourism. And then the next one is Trevi's Homecoming, which is a baseball tournament that's going to be happening at the Portland baseball fields. That one is still currently in process of being finalized, so there aren't a whole lot of details I can go into at this time, but I can promise you that there will be more information, as well as press conferences and things, as we get closer to the event and more details are finalized. Next slide. So here's the list of our current metrics year-to-date for us. I think the important thing for me to point out is that we've exceeded all of our goals right now. There's, technically, there's one goal we didn't hit, which was site visits, which is not on this list. Part of that's because we had a fam, or familiarization trip planned in August. However, our planners do 20 to 30 events a year, and trying to get eight of them in one weekend in Corpus was a scheduling nightmare. So we scratched that, and so we didn't get our eight, but we got two, and we've got a few more planned over the next three to four months. So we feel pretty good with where we're at with that, all things considered, but we've blown all of our other numbers away on that. I really want to bring to attention the rebooked room nights on here. When we started, like I said, Visit Corpus Christi hadn't done a whole lot in the sports market, so when we looked back through the previous historical years of what was on record within us in our database, there's only 2,700 room nights total within there. And that's not to say there weren't 27 hotel room nights from sports events that were happening, it's just Visit Corpus Christi had never had a hand in any of those things up until now. So you'll notice that we got to 18,900 rooms on this, as opposed to the 2,700 that we knew were already in effect. And a lot of that comes from Beach to Bay, Conquer the Coast, and a few of the other events that we know are a year and, and year-round basis. It was important for us to really make an effort to identify those events as well. One, to build relationships with our clubs. You can't bid on a lot of national and international events unless you have your club support. But also, two, we needed to build a needs date calendar, so what dates were open from a venue perspective? Which events did we want to avoid, because we didn't want to book over the top of local events? And at the same time, we wanted to assist our local sports planners to make sure that we helped them grow their events even larger than what they currently were at, so that we can maximize their success as well. And then the last piece on here is just pointing out that it's a roughly a $12.4 million direct spend economic impact of what we've had on the books within the past fiscal year-to-date. Next slide. So this is what we've got coming up right now within our tentative leads. These are not all of the projects that we're working on. I think that number would essentially double right now if we were to do that. These are the ones where we currently have bids out for consideration, or we've already secured the event, but we're waiting for hotels to submit their proposals to us and have a planner officially confirm it. So if you look at that, we're, we're essentially doubling what we've done with those 10 events, what we've done the entire past fiscal year-to-date, which is pretty exciting. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we can get across the finish line with a couple of those and really secure it and get it in there. Next slide. And then the last piece for us is there's been a lot of conversation over a lot of different sports facilities within council over the past few months and past year. I just wanted to highlight the projects that we've specifically been working on at varying degrees. Some of them we've been waist-deep in, some of them we've just kind of had some initial conversations and some advisory pieces. So those are all listed on here. In January, I sent out to council a facilities recommendation deck. If the council doesn't have that anymore, they still want to have it, please let me know. I'm happy to reemail it out to everybody, so you have access to that. Again, that's based on the Huddle Up Group destination analysis that I talked about at the very beginning of the presentation, as well as the Parks and Rec 10-year master plan. I was able to read through that, go through our Huddle Up Group destination analysis, and I put a recommendation list together with all of those things in mind for that. And then the last thing I kind of want to talk about with that is when I first got here, my wife and I were hosting a friend over for dinner, and they were asking what I do, because naturally, you know, it's brand-new and not a lot of people know about sports tourism, and so they were asking, you know, "Hey, so what are you doing all this?" And I told them, "Oh, so you build sports facilities." And I said, "No, that's not quite what we do." I said, "We advocate for them and we recommend." And they go, "Oh, great, well, my kid plays select baseball right now." And we travel to Houston, we travel to Portland, we travel to San Antonio and Austin to play in our tournaments. We don't really play here in Corpus Christi that often. And when we do, we don't really enjoy playing in Corpus Christi, other than the fact of we get to be home for it. And that really kind of struck me as something important, because we know that we have sports facilities, but we know that we need more, and we know that we need to renovate and upgrade a few of them as well. And so I want to give credit to the council here for the Greenwood project. That is going to be a huge piece to this and making sure that we get to that point and that people can be proud of where they're playing, and that we can keep some of that economic impact here, but also knowing that there's quite a few other projects as well that could use some of the same kind of treatment. And so with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I will open it up for questions.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jewell, thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to ask you a few questions. The council that you're talking about, who, who appoints the members to that?
That would be myself and Brett Otting, CEO of Visit Corpus Christi.
Okay. And you said you had how many members on the council?
Roughly 13.
13, okay. And I guess my question is, what type of events, I mean, you've got a list of some stuff on here, but you said you have five that you've got, that you're working on to bring in, is that right?
We've got a lot of events that we're currently working on. If you look at the numbers in the sheet that say leads evaluated, that's every single event that we've, that we've seriously taken a look at and evaluated whether or not that's something we can host, or that we can pull the resources together to actually bring that event to come here. So I believe we were somewhere around, if I remember right off the top of my head, it was 125, but I think our goal was about 50. And then the prospects line, we had 10, but I think we're closer to 25 total with that number. So there's, there's a number of different things on there. What the council itself does to help us with that is kind of four key points. They're helping us collect resources, whether that's in-kind, whether that's sponsorship, whether that's just names and contact information to help us get to where we need to go. Some of it's actual physical help and volunteers, some of it's just advice on how to go about doing that. You know, again, in the beginning, what we talked about, one of our five key pieces and pillars of what we do is being that convener of sports stakeholders. Our council are essentially our sports tourism stakeholders, so that's why Parks and Rec is involved in there. Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi has a representative on there. The Corpus Christi Hooks have a representative on there, so that we can all come together when we have large events, whether that's a world sailing championship, whether that's a Grand Prix in downtown, to where we can get everyone together, get everyone on the same page, pull of our, all of our resources together, so that not only can we get the event here, but we can make sure that it's run properly and that it's run successfully to where they're going to want to continue to come here.
Okay. So are we coordinating with the company that's running ABC Center for us to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts with them?
100% correct. Danny Malice is on that council as well.
I'm sorry, who is?
Danny Malice, the General Manager of the American Bay Center.
Yeah. Okay, and here's, here's my final question. There's been a lot of comments here about, from people in our public comment section about kiteboarding and the appropriate place to do kiteboarding, and they don't seem to think that doing kiteboarding from our beautiful bayfront is a doable deal, but have y'all looked into that, any at all, to determine?
We have.
Locations?
We've actually been very involved with the local kiteboarding community to get an understanding of what is needed at minimum to have an actual launch for that. As far as our specific interests are concerned, we not only want that, but we also want to make sure that it's an event-capable venue, because if we do a launch with just those minimum specs, that's fantastic. We can have people still participate, which is still good for the community, but that doesn't help us on the sports tourism front and the ROI and the generating of economic impact. So as long as we have the ability to have an event-capable venue for that, we can then look at the bigger picture and really promoting and really trying to get more events to stimulate that sport within our community, and really use that as a destination brand for us at an international level.
Okay. Well, that was a $3 answer to a 25-cent question. My, my concern is, are we going to figure out where we can do this to where we don't have to go spend a gazillion dollars of taxpayer money to launch kiteboards?
I think it's possible. I think it depends on the site, in all honesty. I know that there isn't a perfect site right now, depending on, you know, all of the conversations that have happened. There's some that are great, there's some that are good, there's some that are okay, but there's none that are perfect. So I think it really just kind of depends on what makes sense for the city council.
I would just like to say, I'd, I'd hope that you guys can work with Parks and Rec to come up with something that's appropriate.
And to be fair to them, we've worked hand-in-hand with them on this project, specific details. We're also working with some private groups as well that have ownership of land out there to see what will be the best fit. For us, this is kind of an important sport. We do feel like it's something that we can pair with sailing, that we can pair with windsurfing. We actually are trying to plan a trip with U.S. Sailing right now, the national governing body, so that we can really figure out how to do all of this and how to really build the sport and the infrastructure needed. And so once we do that, we'll have a little bit more information for you as far as those details are concerned, but I assure you, we're working with everybody within this community that we're aware of to make sure that we come up with the best recommendation possible.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dan, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman Suckley.
Yeah, one, a couple of quick questions or comments. Joey, thanks for the presentation, great presentation. On the Portland baseball tournament that's being finalized, I think I know the answer to this question, but what is the re, great for the coastal bend if it happens, but Corpus, city of Corpus Christi specific, what's the one thing that's probably keeping us from being able to host a tournament like that?
We don't have that baseball complex here.
Okay, that's what I, that was what I thought it was going to be.
To be fair, we're a little, and to be fair for us, we're lucky in that we still get a lot of those hotel rooms. However, we need to tell the planner that they need to stay in Corpus Christi in order for us, for them to get our assistance. So if we had that here, it'd be much easier.
Okay. My last comment is, I should know that, I should know this, but what's the name of that state program that we get funding if we draw in a, an event from out-of-state into state?
The ETFs, or the Events Tourism Fund, I believe.
Yeah. And have we been able to utilize that or target utilizing that on any specific events?
Not since I've been here. However, I'm learning that process since I'm new to the state and all the funding models. We have been in touch with the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association, which is planning a symposium on how to use that and best practices, and I'm actually on the committee to help plan that event. So we're hoping that happens within the next year or so, so that we can get the details, but it's a reimbursement fund, so we'll still have to come up with the money ahead of time, but assuming that it gets approved, that's a, definitely a funding opportunity for us in the future, for sure.
Yeah, seems like a great tool for us down here on the beach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joey. We're going to go to public comment, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll come back to Peter's operations. Mr. Rusley, would you please recite the decorum?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you. So individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents, and for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium, state your name and address prior to speaking. And there are two opportunities in which you can make, public comment on an agenda item. The first is at this time, and the second would be at the time in which we actually hear the item, so please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. If you, it will let you know exactly how much time you have left. Once the buzzer goes off, if you will please conclude your comment, it would be much appreciated. If you have a petition or any information that you would like the council to have, if you'll please hand it to our secret, city secretary, and she will distribute it to us before you begin speaking. So with that, we will start with Mr. John Hendricks. Yes, thank you.
622 Texas Avenue, John Hendricks, Born and Spawn Hospital, Member VFW 2397. Sons of Confederate veterans, Camp 713, Iraq veteran, two times Bronze Star recipient, one time. Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, this Thursday will mark the anniversary of Corpus Christi's 1919 hurricane, which wiped out North Beach and took 1,000 lives. Saturday, I drove out to our 1919 hurricane memorial to see if any improvements have been made to its disgraceful surroundings. Sadly, nothing has changed. On a related note, these photos that you see are from Hillcrest New Bayview Cemetery, and I think they speak for themselves. Next slide, please. My main topic today is your recent action on short-term rentals. June last year, you adopted a short-term rental ordinance that levied a $250 fee per unit per year on every homeowner who rents out a portion of their home as an SDR, short-term rental. Case in point, my two disabled brothers live at my Grandma Hendricks' house in Lyndale. The eldest is a Vietnam veteran. They rent out the back half, back half of the house to traveling nurses and doctors, and prior to the ordinance, they were already paying around $500 per year hotel occupancy tax. The new $250 fee up their 500 to, to 750. Fair enough, $250 per unit per year was being imposed on all Corpus Christi SDR owners equally. Next slide, please. However, then in June of this year, you appeared to move away from treating all homeowners equally. The original ordinance got amended and has resulted in many island SDR owners getting tax relief from the $250 per unit per year fee. Said owners will see their SDR tax slashed from 250 down to $6.25 per unit per year, perhaps lower. My disabled brothers could have used...
Sadly, nothing has changed. On a related note, these photos that you see are from Hillcrest New Bayview Cemetery, and I think they speak for themselves. Next slide, please. My main topic today is your recent action on short-term rentals. June last year, you adopted a short-term rental ordinance that levied a $250 fee per unit per year on every homeowner who rents out a portion of their home as an SDR, short-term rental. Case in point, my two disabled brothers live at my Grandma Hendricks' house in Lyndale. The eldest is a Vietnam veteran. They rent out the back half of the house to traveling nurses and doctors, and prior to the ordinance, they were already paying around $500 per year hotel occupancy tax. The new $250 fee up their 500 to 750. Fair enough, $250 per unit per year was being imposed on all Corpus Christi SDR owners equally. Next slide, please. However, then in June of this year, you appeared to move away from treating all homeowners equally. The original ordinance got amended and has resulted in many Island SDR owners getting tax relief from the $250 per unit per year fee. Said owners will see their SDR tax slashed from 250 down to $6.25 per unit per year, perhaps lower. My disabled brothers could have used a little tax relief as well, but your SDR fee relief program does not appear to help out people who live here, primarily benefits some absentee landlords and island real estate speculators. These people's SDR tax will vanish to almost nothing, and the city will be out $70,000 as far as I can calculate. Dear Madam Mayor, council members, please tell me my facts are wrong. I want to be wrong. Otherwise, I implore you, revisit your SDR, consolidate the application fee structure, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Jesse Gilbert.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager, Jesse Gilbert, Texas Aquarium, North Beach, here to speak in favor of Item 17, the continuation of the professional services agreement with Hundreds Strategic Partners. I think this is a great opportunity for the city to continue to move the city convention center complex, the hotel, what's good for tourism I think is good for the City of Corpus Christi, and so myself and the aquarium are certainly supportive of continuation of that agreement, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Bridget Baldwin. Is Bridget Baldwin here? No? You are here, okay, sorry. Next, we'll have Sean Flanagan, if you'd like to come up, Roy Garcia, John Weber, and Lamont Taylor. Well, Adam Rios is the last one, so might as well all come up if you can, and maybe sit in this front row. Thank you very much for doing that.
Good afternoon, council and mayor and all the constituents that are here. Thank you all for last week. I wasn't myself, I came out of desperation about my home.
Can you state your name and address? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I apologize. Who's asking me?
Me.
Okay, Bridget Baldwin, 1518 Howard Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I heard the rules, I apologize. I came last week out of desperation because I didn't know what else to do, and I received a call threatening me again, and saying not to come back, or not to mention my issues again, and so I'm here. Good trouble, I guess. I'm here, I'm just, I want to first thank Mr. Raymond for making sure I don't have any warrants for my arrest, and that's all cleared up, praise God for that. And I want to thank the council members that notified me and contacted me out of concern. I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. And my home is still in condition, I still have a legal driveway. What I didn't mention last week when I came up was that I had fell in my driveway and broke my neck in four places. And so my, I, that was in '21, and still recuperating. But I am, I guess I'm so bothered that this is actually happening in Corpus Christi. Like, we're not but a teaspoonful of people, but the fact, I don't know who enforces the laws, or who enforces the rules, or if the employees have any rules, that they can go out, this particular person and this particular department has the authority to go out and issue sanctions where it'd end up in prosecution and then warrant for arrest. I just don't know how that's possible. It sounds unbelievable, but trust me, I have a paper trail that goes on forever. I am not the only person, but I'm the only person that's willing to come forward at this time. There are several houses like that, and gathering my wits and my courage to notify you guys and let everybody know what's going on. This, of course, is with Hurricane Harvey Project and relating to the permits that were or not issued, and there's other things that happen, like, for instance, when we moved out the houses, we had to shut down all our utilities and turn them off so the contractors, excuse me, the contractors would be using their own. However, the contractors called the city and had them reconnect, and I, and they did that to mine, and when we moved back in the house, we're having a $900 utility bill. And, ah, two seconds, so when, well, anyway, I'll let, I'll continue that next time. Thank you all for listening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Sean Flanagan.
Hi, my name's Sean Flanagan, I live at 4218 Herndon Street. I was really excited listening to the Sports Commission. I wish they would have had it when I was still coaching A&amp;M Corpus, because that's really a step in the right direction. Hats off to y'all that had a part in doing that. I think Mr. Pusley here, Consular Pusley, had a good point, you know, we want to bring sports here, but we don't want to spend a gazillion dollars bringing them here, and that's in a balance. We want to grow the city, but we don't, we need to be, we need to be aware of the needs of the people. And right now, in the inflation deal, which is going on, anytime anybody sitting here looking at me or in the audience goes to the store, you come back and it's like, oh my goodness, I spent this much money, and I, you know, I'm spending twice what I was a year or so ago. And here's the deal, this is why I think you might want to think about it, I don't know if it's been approved or not, you're going on the, supposedly going on the voting rolls, we're going to vote in November for a decision whether or not to end two sales taxes or to create a new sales tax on ourselves. I think that's an idea that we shouldn't do, and there's four reasons for this. Number one, a sales tax, if you're of socialist leanings, is the most regressive and inequitable method of taxation you can have, because it falls on the poorest the hardest. Second deal, the seawall, the seawall, you know, that's great, we need a seawall. However, if the city has chosen to move nine to 10 million dollars from the seawall to redo a water garden, when the city itself has had two years of water rationing restrictions, obviously the seawall's got enough money. The American Bank Center, love the American Bank Center, but basically it's a failure. It's never supported itself. You don't reinforce failure, and if it's failed, you need to decide what to do. Now, if you're going to build a hotel and go in a totally different direction, that is a decision that I think is well beyond what we want to do. We need to remember how much resources to get the end we're looking for. Last thing, a new tax, it extends the spending beyond the seawall and the American Bank Center to include commercial roads, parks, that's great, and the airport. So obviously, in this time, when the citizens of Corpus Christi are having to restrict their spending due to inflation and wages not keeping up to that, I think the city should respect the fact that our citizens are in tight times, and therefore, every little bit you can contribute by not renewing a sales tax on us would be definitely appreciated. I think you need to look at the totality of the situation. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. And just a couple of statements of fact, we are not building a hotel, that is absolutely not happening. That is the, a private, yes, sir, thank you. Just want to say, since it was said publicly, we're not building a hotel, City of Corpus Christi, municipal government is not interested in going into the hotel business, that would be a private, a private initiative, has nothing to do with us. And we're also not creating a tax. We are not creating a tax, use those words, so I'm going to factually just make sure that that is said. Here soon, we will have a very well-explained factual, some factual information on exactly what is moving forward regarding the vote that's coming in November and the initiative of the expansion of the American Bank Center. So I know there's a lot of things going around saying, oh, well, they're going to build a hotel, there's a new tax that they're going to, you know, impose on us, absolutely not. There is not a new tax that is going to be imposed. We're following a very democratic process, which is a vote, and it is, it is to expand. But I won't go into that now, I just wanted to make sure those things were kind of clarified so that we can all make sure we know what, where we're heading. And more to come, and we certainly appreciate your voice, Mr. Flanagan, but more to come. So, thank you. Roy Garcia.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Bohardo and council members, my name is Roy C. Garcia, and I reside at 1216 12th Street. I'm here today to voice my concern about 1211 and 1/2 11th Street and 1225 and 1217 12th Street. 1211 and 1/2 11th Street is a rundown garage apartment where homeless and drug addicts gather under the cover of helping the owner of the front house. I have called code enforcement since 2011 about this rundown garage apartment. It has been a problem with bees. I have been stung several times mowing my own yard, and on Sunday, my neighbor and friend was stung by the same bees. But that's not all, Mayor. Recently, my biggest problem have been homeless or drug addicts cutting across my front yard. You see, I don't have a front yard fence to keep them out. Next to my house are two vacant lots that belong to Grumwell Printing on Morgan Street. The homeless folks walks past by my house, cut through the vacant yard, and hide in the garage down, the garage rundown apartment, 1211 and 1/2 11th Street. The same folks also stay across at 1225 and 1217 12th Street, across from my home. On September 1st, my detached garage was broken into. Someone used bolt cutters to steal from me. My next-door neighbor, cameras showed one person coming across from the back garage apartment to my yard at 2:30 in the morning. I have called code enforcement on this. I've called code enforcement on April of this year and recently on September 1st. Code enforcement came to the two houses on 12th Street and boarded up at the beginning of the year. Still, selling drugs to the homeless is what's going on now. I have called 911, 911 several times because of homeless people are under the influence of drugs. They fight, argue among themselves, trash the streets with dirty clothing, water bottle, cups, and dogs are up and down the street following them. All this is going on because of these vacant houses. Now, I will have to decide to build a fence that will cost around $5,000 or continue to put up with these folks.
That's ridiculous. Mr. Garcia, that's the time, but you have absolutely made your point, especially with these pictures. Mr. Zanoni, can we please get this addressed, and if he's called before, you know?
Yes, ma'am. Since 2011, I've been calling code enforcement about this issue.
Since 2011, over 10 years?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, well, Chief Blackman's in the back, he'll help you out. Our deputy chief, Blackman, in the back, you're in the uniform, he'll help you out.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take care of it.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry you had to come down here to get this handled. John Weber.
John Weber, 609 Naples Street. Transparency is characterized by visibility or accessibility of information. As I have pointed out many times in the past, this is a serious problem at the city. It appears the city attorney has stepped up his efforts to limit accessibility of information by increasing the cost of information and by delaying or attempting to withhold public information. I submitted a request on June 2nd for the handwritten notes that Assistant Attorney Rodriguez took during my meeting with him on April 28th. This is a very simple request, the document is in the legal department. Next slide. I received a copy of a five-page letter written by the, written to the AG's office from another assistant city attorney on June 16th, which I imagine took a considerable amount of time to craft. Next slide. A key point was this statement. On April 28th, 2023, an assistant city attorney met with the requister and was informed of allegations that the requister appeared to believe could be actionable. Even prior to meeting with the requister and also subsequently and leading up to the requister making this active request, he has provided information to the city council and made statements regarding potentially volatile actions, thus putting the city on notice of impending litigation. Next slide. This is important because it confirms I provided information to the council. Next slide. Next slide. I felt that the city made a weak case to withhold information, so I crafted my own letter to the AG and paid $5 to mail it certified. Next slide. On August 22nd, I received a four-page letter from the AG ruling in my favor. Next slide. I emailed the legal department asking when I could get the information. Next slide. On the 23rd, I emailed again at 2:25 PM and said I could inspect the document at 4:30. I called at 4:00 PM and the legal department said they would get back to me. Next slide. Finally, I got the information on October, August 24th, after 83 days of waiting. If the city's attorney's goal was to delay me getting the information, he succeeded. If his goal was to withhold the information, he failed. I have it. This was a considerable waste of time and effort for the city staff, the AG staff, and myself, when the information could have been given to me to start. As always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Risley, what, you know, we hear a lot of complaints about how long it takes and the costs and just the whole process.
Mr. Weber's made about 35 requests in the past six months, so he's going to have a lot of complaints about requests for information. But I'd like to point out that this is exactly the process that is mandated by law. We follow that process precisely. If you're asking for notes of information that are within the legal department, your attorney has quite a bit of confidential information within the legal department, they're going to be submitted in accordance with the law to the Texas Attorney General. That was done. Everything was done strictly in accordance with the law. We're required to submit to the Attorney General the arguments about nondisclosure. In this case, the Attorney General stated that the material needed to be released, and in strict compliance with the law, we notified Mr. Weber, and he was permitted to come in and inspect the document.
So just to be clear, the price, the cost of these public information requests does not change, it's been consistent, is that correct?
The cost is mandated, the cost is established by the State of Texas that we charge. We charge what the State of Texas permits. We've actually, we're allowed to go up by 20% in the State of, and the City of Corpus Christi actually did an ordinance that increased that by 20% that we're allowed to do, before I even came here, that was many years ago. But the State of Texas has kept those charges consistent, so if we have time that we expend in going through to obtain information, we can charge an administrative fee of approximately $15 per hour, which actually, incidentally, is less than the, our cost of our legal assistant in going through that, so we're not making a profit on that. If there's programming cost, it's a, it's a right to charge $35 per hour. So we do charge, but we charge strictly in accordance with state law, and when the Texas Attorney General gives us a ruling, we comply with that ruling.
But the point is that the state did rule against you, not you, but us, the City of Corpus Christi.
Walton Miles.
It wasn't us versus them, it was a ruling by the Texas Attorney General that we complied with and we provided the information.
That's not exactly what I heard, but we can discuss it later.
Okay, thank you. Lamont Taylor. And then Adam Rios. First, Adam.
Lamont Taylor, 22 Hancock. I have three things to talk about. First one is talking about the water. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to see 30 years or 20, 20 years of us being subsidizing large water individuals, so I thank you for that opportunity. Unfortunately, I had some emergencies that I was in the hospital, so I couldn't come in and contacted, thank you personally, so I'm taking this opportunity now. Second, I need to talk to you about is the IDAs, industrial agreements, that you had talked about in city council meetings. talked about in, in, in city council meetings previously. Again, I was in the hospital indisposed, so I could not come in on those. So, I'm commenting on now because the last time you had an industrial agreement action, I'd spoken with city staff about the possibility of having individuals who were in the neighborhood, which is my neighborhood, Hillcrest, and we are buttoning those individuals in the industry so that we can have a conversation about the things that are going on in that industrial agreement. And the third thing I want to talk to you about, or a statement of fact, is that the Inner Harbor Desalinization Plant Proposal, proposed. I would suggest and recommend that you called it the Hillcrest Desalinization Proposal because that's basically where you put in that particular, a desalinization plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Adam Rios. Is Adam in the audience? He's not. Okay, well, that concludes our public comment period. So, we will go ahead and go back to the city manager's comments and updates on operations. I think you're.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We just have two other quick items, Mayor. So, the next item is a briefing on Conquer the Coast or reminder of Conquer the Coast. We know recently, we held a media event here at City Hall, but the Conquer the Coast Bike Ride is this weekend, and we do have some individuals here that will help me in this presentation. We look forward to welcoming cyclists from across Texas and other states to compete in the 21st Annual Conquer the Coast Bike Ride this Saturday at 7 o'clock. It begins at Whataburger Field, home of the Corpus Christi Hooks. We want to thank the mayor and the city council for supporting this signature event for the city. We also want to thank the United Chamber of Commerce for their partnership. Al Ariola is in the front row, the president of the chamber, and Conquer the Coast event organizer, Arthur Haas, is here as well. Did he have to leave, maybe? Okay, Arthur had to step out, but he was here earlier, and he's been very instrumental over the years in helping to plan and facilitate the event. So, this is a great event, and it's a great way to showcase our beautiful city. It's quite the unique bike ride going around the bay and other water features. We expect over 1,000 cyclists to be in attendance. There's over that many that have registered so far. Over 60% of the participants are coming from outside the city. So, over 600 people then will be here in our community that are not from the community, helping to, to see and showcase our city and, and spend time here. We do want to thank a few of our sponsors, to include HEB that'll be here. Of course, TAM UCC, the Islanders, are instrumental in the event day. We know that the monies that come from the event benefit education. That's an important point. So, all the registration fees and donations that are made as part of the Conquer the Coast benefit the United Chamber of Commerce's foundation, which is a professional development, education-focused foundation. TAM UCC, Islanders Athletic Fund, and Bike for Kids, Corpus Christi. Those are the, the entities that benefit from Conquer the Coast. We need to thank our own city departments as well that make this possible, our Parks and Recreation Department, our Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works in particular. Now, we do know that there is some rain forecasted for Saturday. It's good news and bad news. It hasn't rained all summer, but now that we have the bike event, we're going to get some rain. So, I was telling the organizers, we need to plan these events more often. That way, we might get out of this drought. You know what I mean? So.
We're going to need the rain.
Yeah.
We need the rain. We're at 35% combined levels today. So, we do have a short video we want to show, and then Al Ariola is going to come up and just say a few remarks as well.
Get ready and gear up to Conquer the Coast, the ultimate cycling event along the Corpus Christi Bay. Join us Saturday, September 16th at Whataburger Field. Register today and choose from three different routes. Take a stroll on the 10-mile course down Ocean Drive. Push yourself a little further with a 21-mile ride to the Corpus Christi Naval Air Station, or challenge yourself with an enduring 66-mile journey across the Harbor Bridge. It's the ultimate adventure you don't want to miss. Let's ride at Conquer the Coast.
Awesome.
Thank you, City Manager. Yes, Peter, pretty, City Manager Zanoni pretty much summarized it pretty well. We have a huge debt of gratitude to thank the city and all the departments for your partnership in making this happen. It's a big event. I think you guys know this, cross, it's crossing communities. It's, takes a whole lot of organization from a lot of people that genuinely care. He mentioned our committee chair, Sam Legoria. We also mentioned Art, Michael Wood, Josiah Castro. I especially want to thank Sergio from the Parks Department. He's been showing up every month to the meetings to make sure we're truly coordinated and streamlined on this. And so, we're excited for Saturday. Rain or not, rain or shine, we're really excited. And as mentioned, I am, in the spirit of the SECase and, and whatnot, we are branding this year's jersey to be a little bit more Hispanic heritage-oriented, and so, if you didn't get your jersey, we'll make sure we get you, get you one. And also, if you are interested in taking the 66-mile challenge, we'll get you a free registration. Thank you so much, City Manager Zanoni.
Thank you, Al.
Great. And then, Mayor, our City Secretary Rebecca is just going to remind us again that next meeting will be at the RTA using their chambers there as this facility will finally get an upgrade, especially with audiovisual equipment and hosting the community that uses this forum here, this chamber, for more than just city council meetings. So, it's a long-waited upgrade, and Rebecca's going to just remind us of some of the protocols we'll follow starting next meeting next week.
That's right. Thank you, Peter. So, as the city manager stated, and as our pastor stated too during his invocation, we will be moving to the, the CCRTA, the Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority, building effective next week. Again, we thank them for allowing us the use of their facilities while our council chambers are under construction. And I do have a map. There's a map. So, just to remind the public, parking is not available at the CCRTA, so public attendees will need to park at City Hall and use a crosswalk to safely cross the street. And we do have a diagram there showing the two available parking lots that we have and the crosswalks that would be available for them as well. And entry will be through the main doors that face the bus stop. So, the entrance that's on Leopard and Staples, that, that's not open. It's, it's that main entry that's available to the public. And once through security, city security officers will guide attendees to the elevator or stairs and up to the second floor because their, their boardroom is on the second floor. It's room 210. And public restrooms are on the first floor next to security. Public comment procedures will be the same. Sign-up is available here. We also have sign-up available at the meeting on some iPads, some kiosks that will be available for them. And for more information, we do have social media posts that are out. The city website has information. We've given all the council cards that will be available, and there'll be signage as well as we make this transition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Pusley, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Peter, I just want to mention again for the 87th time, I hope that, and I'm, I'm serious about this, that whatever audiovisual that we come up with, that it takes notice of the fact of those of us who have hearing challenges.
Yes, sir, Councilman. We've taken that.
That's fully tested before we have to come in here and find out it doesn't work.
Yes, sir. No, that's been, it's been taken into consideration, and we have multiple audio assist initiatives as part of the renovation.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you bringing that up. Yes, sir.
Okay, that concludes.
That concludes the city manager's report, Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, well, that'll take us over to item or section J, the Consent Agenda, items four through 11. Do we have any requests to pull any items from the diocese here from?
Yes, Mayor, number 10.
Item number 10. Anyone else? Okay, there being no one, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item, of item number 10.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 10 is Councilman Hernandez, your question or comment?
Yes, I wanted to have some clarity as to some of the funding for this proposal and maybe just some understanding as to what has been spent and when and where. You have a bid of $747,965. But, and the CIP page you put on here doesn't quite match up with the information associated with it. For example, you have a general obligation bond for 2018 at $906,000, but that bond was for $820,000, I believe. In the 2018 bond, Museum for Science and History Renovation Improvements was $820,000, was earmarked. Where's that additional bond funding coming from?
I might have to call in a lifeline on that one. You are correct. It was listed in the brochures, $820,000. I'm assuming there were some savings on some of the other projects in that proposition that left over some remaining funds. Essentially, I can give some of the narrative that might help you out. So, that item was listed on bond 2018 as mechanical, electrical, plumbing improvements to the Science and History Museum, $820,000. And our estimates of what it was going to take to fix everything in that building were as much as 10 times that amount. So, what we've been doing is using that money to hit kind of the, the points of maximum complaint over there. This particular project was, was one of the big complaints of the administration. It just was one that was more operational than preserving the condition of the asset. So, a few details on, on that. The, the building, as you know, was built in three parts. You know, the first part was built in 1967, the second part, 1974, and then the middle, 1990. And so, it, it's kind of cobbled together some of the MEP systems or, or not as well-integrated. The electrical system suffers from, from that, that same cobbled-together approach. So, when they have to open up and shut down that building, the person that's shutting down has to go to four different areas in the building and go into 12 different electrical panels and operate, and they're using breakers to, to turn everything on and off. They have 124 breakers that they, they operate every time they open, every time they shut down, which you really shouldn't be using breakers for that. And then, they're color-coded, and they have to do it in sequence, and if you do something out of sequence, you damage equipment over there. So, this is something the administration has been wanting to get addressed. They, they wanted that back in 2018, but we just didn't have enough money on that bond to be able to do it. So, this project's been kind of on hold, and then we got information that there was some additional CFO funding available, and so, we use that to allow this to go forward.
Additional CFO funding. So, I'm assuming this is from some other CEO that was already approved?
That would be my understanding. I'm, I'm, I'd have to call in a lifeline from.
Or is this a new CEO?
No, that was, it was 2021 CFOs.
And what were they earmarked originally for?
For this project, I think. I'm not, I don't want to guess, but we, we did facility assessment studies of the three assets the city owns four years ago, Councilman, the, the art museum, the science museum, and the art center. And in '21, '22, we programmed in the budgets, through the budget process, certificates of obligation to address some of the critical facility needs, to include chillers and electrical panels and roofing systems.
You're correct.
Yeah, so that's the state, that's correct. Councilor's is saying this assessment's correct. So, it's not found CEOs. It's not, we didn't stumble across it. It was programmed money back in '21 for critical systems, including roofing, electrical, and HVAC systems.
Well, this kind of goes back to the budget policy that I, that I asked for with regards to designing these projects beforehand, so we don't have the situation where we do a bond and then realize we don't have enough money because it wasn't, you know, it was just an estimate, a guestimate.
Right.
So, I, I think this is a prime example of how, you know, projects end up costing us more, and we have to figure out how to spend, how to, how to pay for it through certificates of obligation, which were never approved by the general public.
I'd, I'd say it's actually even worse than that. I don't think we had a real good scope at, at that time. It was just a, a plug figure, and it didn't really match a facility assessment or, or cost estimate.
Yeah, just let me remind the council and the community, so this is a 2018 bond, and the past four and a half years, the two bond programs we've done, we don't do this anymore. We haven't done it in the 2020 or the 2022, that being have rough, loose scopes. We have narrowly defined and as best estimated as possible projects so that this doesn't happen. So, this is a legacy 2018 bond program project. Since I've been there, we've been careful about making sure projects are well-defined and estimated as best as possible, and we have used the approach you've talked about, Councilman, that you champion. Bill Witt is a good example of that, as is Yorktown Boulevard. So, in two successive bond programs, in one in the 2020, we designed those two projects, and we have good design estimates, and then in the subsequent bond program, being the 2022, we fully fund the construction.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we're aware.
This is legacy-type work that we're cleaning up.
But it, it's still certificates of obligation that are going to add to our debt obligation. So, I want to make sure that's, that's made aware of. Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, just real quick, Jeff, and I don't know, Peter, if we've had any kind of a, before I ever got here, discussion with staff and employees and people who run these facilities for the city about energy efficiency needs, and Jeff, turning, you know as well as I do, turning electrical equipment on by breakers every day, day in and day out, is not the most electrically efficient way to do things, and many times can result in the cost of your electricity going up higher because all of those facilities run off of demand meters, and those demand meters are hit whenever you hit the breakers. So, I would hope that we look into that and make sure that the people understand how that's to be done. If you have two chillers in your facility and you hit the breakers on both of those chillers at the same time, your demand meter goes off the wall and you pay more for the electricity.
This, new equipment is going to be software-controlled.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 10. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Section L is Public Hearings, items 12 through 16. Item number 12 is zoning case number 0723-03. Inquee, is that the right way to say that? I-N-K-U-E-E, 6P LLC, located in District 2, rezoning property at or near 1801 South Staple Street from the CG2 General Commercial District to the CI Intensive Commercial District.
Mayor, I'd like to propose, unless there's any objection, these two are, the next two, this one and the next one, are basically associated with the same properties across the street from each other. These buildings have been abandoned for a long time. I think this is a good project. I had some questions, which I submitted to Al. I don't see him in the audience anymore, but, and he answered those questions.
Okay. Councilwoman, I mean, just being at your district, or how are you?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Pusley, for, for saying this. It is a win-win for, for all of us, for all of us, especially in District 2. I don't know how long those buildings have been abandoned, but I would say at least one decade. And when I saw this, I was like, okay, this is, this is something definitely that District 2 could use more of. I, I hope that there's more developers that will invest in District 2 because it is, I'm saying, it is still the heart of Corpus Christi, and I know that there's a lot of people that want to live there, but there's no places for them to live. So, this, again, a win-win. I, I don't know, Al, do you want to add anything to this?
I apologize. I just stepped out. Thank you for that. I can go through the presentation if you want.
Well, yeah, I think we're, I think we're okay. I'm going to go ahead and open public comment, and then we'll, I'll open public hearing. I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number 12 or 13? Yes, ma'am? Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, come on down. And item number 13 is a zoning case number 0723-07, in Quay, 6P LLC, located in District 2, rezoning property at or near 1800 South Staple Street from CG2 General Commercial District to the CI Intensive Commercial District. So, as mentioned by Mr. Pusley, it's, they're, they're very relative to each other. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Carmen Hernandez. I'm at 610 Naples, and I've lived there for 50 years plus. The buildings have been abandoned, and they have been a, a, a place for homeless people to live and trash to be dumped on. I, I guess my only question is the, the wording that you've used. So, we're going from a general commercial district, and we're asking for it to be, I guess, advanced. and we're asking for it to be, I guess, advanced to an intensive commercial district. And I was just wondering, I'm just curious, that's what that's going to do to my neighborhood?
Sure.
Is it going to provide more places, homes, condos, or is it going to be something that is more commercialized? And that's my concern.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Raymond can address that here at the microphone.
Intensive Commercial District allows this allows adaptive use to work in primarily for two reasons. One, it doesn't have limitations on density, right? So the four-story office building can be converted to multifamily quite easily. And it doesn't require two other things. It doesn't require a buffer. It has no buffer limitations, and these developments are not adjacent to residential, so they don't have to buffer themselves. And then finally, it doesn't have a parking ratio. However, it does meet the parking requirements, but we try to locate these, or the plans, the C tries to locate these on corridors that have transit and other access, and that's the other advantage of an intensive commercial. So it's it's, in essence, a perfect fit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Raymond. I'm going to close public hearing. Ma'am, if you still have questions, you're very welcome to talk to Mr. Raymond behind, or I mean, in the back or whenever after the meeting. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, sir?
I I would like to finish my comments. I started a while ago.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you weren't.
Yeah, thank you. I I had submitted some questions to Al, and he provided answers. I am a little concerned about the parking issues around those two buildings when you turn this into multifamily apartments or whatever they end up being. And of course, Al has become very adept at not providing us Platts until it's time to do that. He learned his lesson on that a long time ago, and I appreciate that. But I do think that this is something, and it's Councilwoman, I realize it's in your district, and it's a good project, but we need to be cognizant of how the parking is going to impact that area. We don't want to end up with twenty or thirty cars every night parked on each one of those streets.
Understood. In both both locations, north and south, are going to have thirty-one apartment units. The UDC requires one and a half parking units per unit, which both both areas meet. And you asked about the building in the back on the south property, and underneath there's parking. That's included in their parking. Now, I don't withhold information from this group. I just strategically tell you what's happening. And in this case, form follows function. So whatever they're going to do, they haven't given that to us, but we've met several times, and they've come up with, hey, this is what we want to do. So ultimately, hopefully, it'll be a great development.
Strategically, that's a good word. I'll remember that word. Thank you very much.
Sure thing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Yes, with that, I would like to approve twelve and thirteen items.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number fourteen is an ordinance authorizing a wastewater trunk line construction and reimbursement agreement up to four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents with MPM Development LP for the proposed residential and commercial development located off Yorktown Drive, southeast of Starry Road, also known as Oso Creek Corner Subdivision.
In interest of time, Mayor, the like you did with the the previous zoning case, there are three reimbursements reimbursement agreements. One is for wastewater trunk line, the one in front of you. The next one is for a wastewater collection line system, and the final one is for a water grid main reimbursement, construction reimbursement agreement. I didn't know if you wanted to take them all. You want me to go through all three of them? I just wanted to share with you that at the end, if all of these are approved, the trust funds will be a negative two point three million dollars in in the hole.
So I just. Just take just take them all. We can take them all. And I'll wait till after the public comment section to make a motion.
We have fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let me go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? And I'll read them in a moment on items number fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen. And before I close public comment, let me read. Let me read. Item number fifteen is an ordinance authorizing a wastewater collection line extension, construction, and reimbursement agreement up to three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents with MPM Development LP for a proposed residential and commercial development located off Yorktown Drive, southeast of Starry Road, also known as Oso Creek Corner Subdivision. Item number sixteen is an ordinance authorizing a water arterial transmission and grid main construction and reimbursement agreement up to one million, eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents with MPM Development LP for the proposed residential and commercial development located off Yorktown Drive, southeast of Starry Road, also known as Oso Creek Corner Subdivision. So if there is no one who would like to come up and make comment on item number fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen, we will close public comment.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilman Klein.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map of this. This area seems to be very close to Oso Creek. I guess also bay, backside of Oso Creek, I guess it is. I I kind of assume the elevation is pretty low out here. I have not been to this property, but I assume that the elevation is pretty low. Is that correct?
It it is, and something I, when we were doing this rezoning, I know if I'm not, if I remember correctly, you opposed it because it was in the it it showed that it was in the floodplain. What I didn't say at that time, that I can say now, is that the portion of the land that's in the floodplain is not in the red. And hold on, I don't even have my map up here. It's not in the hundred and three acres that's that's in the red outline. It's he has more. He has more property, and it's the property, really, that's closer to the to the creek, really. That's the wetlands and the floodplain area. The hundred and three acres are really outside of that. So, yes, so to answer your question, yes, on the on the east and the south side, the elevations are low, which is why it is wetlands and/or in the floodplain. The rest is 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 not.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Section M is an is individual consideration items number seventeen. Number seventeen is a motion authorizing execution of amendment number four to the professional service agreement with Hunden Strategic Partners, Inc. for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a total revised amount not to exceed six hundred and five thousand, three hundred dollars for continuing services regarding the future needs of the American Bank Center, the addition of a conference center hotel, and development of an entertainment district.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Elsie Borkstedt, Assistant Director of Economic Development. We do have a couple of slides. I'm not sure if they're already here. Well, that's the presentation's being put up. I can go through it if you like, but basically, as we have been working for the latter part of this year with the city, with a consultant, Hunden Strategic Partners, for the American Bank Center renovation expansion project. We have worked with them through July, through the summer, where at a point that the existing contract has ended. And so we're here today to propose extending that agreement for an amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, which would basically take us through December with the border election coming up, work on several items related to the convention center renovation expansion, potential hotel headquarters next to the convention center, and a mixed-use entertainment district.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'd second that. Any further, actually, let's open public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on item number seventeen? Come on down.
Rachel Caballero, five twenty-two Hancock. I think coming in here week after week today, you guys got a little bit of a break from public comment. You guys have epically failed at maintenance seeing anything. Also, we there was a conference held here in town on Friday from people from Chicago and California, and they said that this it was very difficult to get into Corpus Christi. So there's two issues here. One, we don't have conventions coming here because there are no direct flights here, and that's probably not going to change in the near future. What's also probably not going to change is that the city is not a good management company. You you guys should not be owning anything because you epically fail at it, and it costs us millions and millions of dollars to repair. Example, the water gardens. We need to leave things like this to the free market, and if nobody's interested, it's probably because it's not a feasible idea. And we have to quit begging people to come here and invest in our city, and we should most definitely take people who want to invest in our city with their own money. So as a community member, and as other people have been very well vocal about this, the community isn't for this hotel. You guys do not know how to manage anything, and so please consider that in your voting.
Thank you. Statement of fact, we are not building a hotel, and we are not managing a hotel. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Mayor, I, you know, I've been a big supporter of what we're trying to do here, but I I'm just afraid we're kind of putting the horse before the cart. I've also begun to be very concerned about OVG's management of our ABC Center. You know, they came in and cut out many of our local vendors, and and we all bit our tongue and swallowed that and moved on for the hopes that things would get better there. I found out recently, they have now kicked out all the local vendors, and I sent Elsa an email about that. I, Peter, I notified you about that and asked for some clarification, which I haven't received yet. So I'm I'm just, I have become very concerned that we're putting the cart before the horse here and that we need to get more information to the public before we go commit to big contracts with contractors for design and whatnot, when we still haven't gotten the buy-in from the community. This is going to be a big deal for Corpus Christi if this goes through, and I think we, in retrospect, if I had the ability to vote on the OVG contract again, I would have changed some things, like, you know, you can't kick all of our vendors out the door the minute you take over. We have to have some discussion about that. So I'm not going to support this at this time until I get more information about what's going to happen here. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to ask a question here, and maybe Peter or Elsie can answer. Is there anything that restricts us from building a hotel? Is there any, you know, restriction? I mean, because I mean, we could say, you know, that we're not going to build a hotel, and that was what I've been saying myself, because I don't think we should be in the hotel business. But I don't know if there's anything that actually prevents us from using funding from the hot taxes or from the type A, type B, or funding that prevents us from actually, you know, paying for or constructing a hotel.
I think, if I may, Councilman, start the conversation on to your question, is one of the elements that was identified through the feasibility study that was conducted by Hunden earlier this year was that there's an opportunity for the market to support a headquarters hotel, correct? We've we've had that discussion. In doing so, the recommendation is to partner with developers that do this day in, day out, and they can manage a hotel. I think the intent is not for the city to get in the business of running a hotel. It's really just to partnering up with flags that do this throughout the country for convention centers, but not necessarily the city owning and managing the hotel. The land will still be, in this case, a site has been identified for a potential headquarters hotel, and so the land will still remain the city of Corpus Christi, but the actual development and management of the data data operation is recommended by our consultant to be done by a master developer.
Okay, so in the term partnership, okay, this is, you know, we're semantics, right? What does partnership mean? Does partner does partnership mean that the city pays for the 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 construction and everything, then we turn it over to a private company to to manage? I mean, because that means we're building a hotel.
Not necessarily, no, sir. It just depends on the deal structure that is negotiated or the plan that's put out for an RFQ.
That's what that's what I'm trying to get at, is what what restrictions are there?
So.
If there's no restrictions, then there's no restrictions.
And this is why we put today before you this item to continue the work with our consultant, who does this throughout the country, is to precisely put together a draft plan for us, help us with the advanced planning is part of this. It's coming up with a request for qualifications and a request for proposals that is in line with the what council's desire is for this particular project.
That should be something that comes to council for for a vote as to how much we're planning to invest, because I can't go out with all good consciousness to say that we're not building a hotel when I there's really no restrictions on it.
So.
As to what that partnership looks like.
Today before you is is hiring a consultant that would help us through that process.
I'm aware of it, and I'm not. I have not been impressed with our consultant, with the work product that I've seen. I'm not, you know, and I see Johnny in the in the audience, and when we got the presentation on what it would do to to impact the rodeo days or rodeo, the Buck Days rodeo, I think it would impact them negatively based on those plans. So I'm concerned that we're, you know, we're not taking in consideration our partners, like mentioned by Councilman Pusley, with with these plans. So I will not be approving. I will not be voting of the affirmative for this.
And if I may clarify, to your point, Councilman, I think it's very important, like as you stated, that we do involve our community and our stakeholders for the venue, those of today, but also the ones for the future, those contenders that we're trying to bring in for larger conventions. And so part of that process is already there. A lot of the legwork throughout this last year has been precisely meeting with our consultant. Just about every month, we have meetings with different stakeholders from this Corpus Christi to Buck Days with Johnny. As a matter of fact, they're the largest tenant and definitely a very important event.
To that point, a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush, right? So I want to make sure that we do accommodate our Buck Days partners.
Absolutely.
As much as possible, because they are an integral part of this community.
Exactly. So some of these conversations regarding the future of Buck Days, how it it plays into the plan, is the preliminary work has been continuing through that process, or this process, that is, and we continue to have those conversations with the Buck Days.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to go ahead and have Johnny Filippello, I think he wants to make public comment as well. Excuse me. Elsie, your slides are up also. No, I want the public. Before I close public hearing, I want to get him in, please.
Thank you, guys. Sorry I'm a little bit late, but Johnny Filippello, President and CEO of Buccaneer Commission. And I also served as the task force chairman to originally bring Hunden Partners to Corpus Christi. We interviewed three different strategists, if you will, for this project. Hunden has been successful all over the United States putting together these type of projects, and I'd like to clarify a little bit here. This is a concept that the vote coming up in November really has nothing to do with, other than it could be a mechanism to help fuel a public-private partnership in the future. If that vote happens, it's one mechanism to help pay for the expansion of a convention center and a hotel. But that would only be something that comes back to the city council for for solicitation and approval. If there's, you know, first of all, Hunden needs to go and find the the private sector partners that would be interested, see what deal models can be made, and then those are brought back to y'all to say, is this a good deal for the city or not? So until we have that discussion with the private sector on on this part of it, it's really a mute point of saying, what kind of hotel are we going to build? Ultimately, it will be you guys' decision on that project and whether it moves forward or not. But this is allowing Hunden to begin those next steps to pursue 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 the private sector and see what options are out there. That's I hope that helps. That's, I hope that helps clarify some of the concerns regarding Buck Days. We've been involved from the get-go. Yes, the initial drawings didn't fit us perfectly, but I feel confident that these guys will work with us and do a great job of making it a successful venture for us. So I don't have any, I actually believe we can grow our support to education with the expanded convention center if that so ends up being the direction that this goes by having more competitions for youth during the 11-day timeframe. But again, it's a model that we are working with today that has some great prospects, but until the private sector comes to the table, it's really just an idea at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Filippello. I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. And Councilman Roy.
Mayor, sorry, and if I can also interject, we do have Rob Hunden on the line by web, that is, and that could help clarify some of the questions that council may have.
Yeah, I want to go back and kind of piggyback onto what Mike Pusley was saying. Because Peter, I had a conversation with you, we had an in-depth conversation months ago on the whole food and beverage and how that was operating and the rationale and the reason why there were changes made when the new management took over. Because I had a concern that Mike had initially saying, okay, we're locking some people out. Matter of fact, I had three or four, I had two basic, large prior partners that made a lot of money off of those contracts before reach out to me and are in my district, and I brought those concerns to you. You did a really good job of explaining how that whole process works. Could you do that for the benefit of council for those that don't understand, understanding how we operated before and then what was involved in terms of the city and our revenue, and then why that was put in place?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you, Councilman. So as one of our speakers said today, the goal of the convention center is to have it operate with the least amount of city taxpayer revenue. So three, four years ago, we showed City Council that for every $3, we spent only $1 comes in to support the convention center. And the goal is to have events that are booked there, to have the revenue that's made from those events help to fund the operations of the convention center. So under the legacy model that existed before, that was not happening. So concessionaires and vendors that use the convention center made big profits, but none of that went to the city. And none of that relieved the taxpayer in the cost for running the convention center. With OVG 360, as they showed us in our most recent report, revenues are up $2 to $3 million because of the way the structure of the contract is today, where entities that partner with OVG 360 pay a portion to use the facility as they do in other business models across the country. And that takes the burden off the taxpayer, and that's the goal. We don't want to overburden the local taxpayer to make some operators big profits. The goal is to bring revenue in and help fund the operations and maintenance of the convention center. So OVG 360, who is the international leader in venue management, the best in the nation, in the world, I should say, their motto is to bring in revenues to help operate the convention center, relieving the burden on the local taxpayer. Now, they do partner with locals, and we'll get that to the City Council. So the business model has changed a little bit, but what has not changed is participation with local vendors. In fact, just recently, they launched yet again an outreach to local vendors to bring in locals to help run facility events that take place there, food and beverage concessions.
That is correct.
Right, and other events. So they're very much part of the local community. The business model has changed a little bit in terms of who maybe, but local participation is a cornerstone of their business. So I hope that helps answer some of the questions, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you. And then my only other question I had is in terms of the Hernan Group, the, in terms of the scope of their job right now and what they've done, really, what percentage would you say in terms of the whole, the entire process that they've completed so far? And, you know, as far as their job and their...
Thank you, Councilman, for the question. Yes, absolutely. So a part of the existing contract, which has not ended as of this summer, it was completing the feasibility study. That was a major component and the top of the list, providing some planning elements in there, having some basic grantings through Convergence Design, who's a leading architect in the country for convention centers, but also providing economic impact and working with our financial team. As a matter of fact, during this legislative season, part of the work that was done by the mayor and Councilman Barrera going to Austin is providing that data for the project finance zone. They were the ones that helped us with the modeling, working with our consultant on the legislative side to help us to put that together, that package. So that has been completed.
So my question is, in overall process, have they done 25% of the work? Do they have 75% of the work more? I mean, how far have they, what I'm trying to do is get an understanding because it seems like my fellow council members are saying, or made the comment, that I don't think that they're doing a good job. What I'm trying to assess right here is what percentage of work have they really done? Have we seen enough to really be able to understand, should we have confidence in them, should we not have confidence? What percentage have they really done right now in terms of looking at this overall process?
I could probably have Rob Hunden speak also more on that. I would like for you to understand the big picture, like you said, of where the whole project is. I mean, we have a lot of work to be done in regards to the design team. We're not there yet, right?
That's what I'm trying to basically understand. Are we at 25%? They got 75% more to go in terms of really getting a good understanding of what can be accomplished? Have they done 100%, you know?
Does Rob want to?
Yes, can we get Rob on the line, please?
Great. I hope you can all see and hear me okay. I'm getting a little feedback, but hopefully it's working for you all. Happy to address all this. So first off, to everybody's points, our job ultimately as your advisor on this whole idea, this whole concept, is to optimize your situation. So all the concerns about how the facility is managed and is it generating enough of a, you know, can it make a profit, can it break even, all of those things, we agree with you. We want all of those things to be the case. What we have done so far are really two things. We have done a huge sort of master plan/feasibility study that gave you concepts for the optimization, improvement and expansion of the ABC, the addition of a headquarters hotel, and the development of a mixed-use entertainment district to actually make this be a place that people want to come and visit as well as live, work and play. Nothing has been decided. You all are the deciders. What we've been doing since really the legislative session is really working with your team to help get you the financing tools so that you don't have to pay for anything. You know, there's, you know, it's that whole plan of finance, the project finance, all of those things that we've been working on with your team so that there's no additional spending needed on behalf of the city to make this thing happen. So that's just been all behind-the-scenes work that's been great to do with the city and their team and their legislative folks. And then this summer, we've been starting to look at, okay, the real sausage-making of, okay, working with the plan of finance team, all the experts, the bond councils, those folks to say, what is a project that can be afforded without having anybody have to pay any more money? What is the optimal plan? And then how do we actually go about getting it designed and planned from, you know, it's just a concept at this point. So there's got to be a ton of design, planning and other work to meet with stakeholders and do all those things to make sure this thing actually is affordable and meets the plan of finance and do all those things. That just takes a lot of time, effort and money. And we've actually been doing weekly calls and meetings with folks at the city, other experts on a weekly basis. We've made trips down there and, you know, our contract ended a while ago. And basically, we just know that in the sausage-making phase, before we even get an architect, before we get developers, before we get an owners' rep firm, there's just a lot of what we would call advanced planning work that needs to happen. And so we want to tee you up so that assuming all the funding falls into place, you're ready in the first quarter of next year to move forward. Because the longer you wait, of course with inflation, the more expensive any investment is going to be. So we're really trying to get all the ducks in a row. You can see that our work products here on these slides include a lot more design work through Convergence Design, so it's not just us, it's a team effort. Draft RFQ for design services, draft RFQ for construction management services, an updated plan, an updated plan of finance, and a number of other items, as well as beating the bushes to start finding out what private sector developers would be interested in developing a hotel that would be a public-private partnership. And number two, one thing I'll say is, there would never be a situation where the city of Corpus Christi would own a hotel without you guys, A, knowing about it and B, voting on it. And so that's never been discussed. That is something that would be a huge deal, and no one has ever even proposed that as a solution. The only solution that's ever been proposed is a privately developed hotel that would need public participation, as all of these do across the country, in order to make it go. And we haven't even gotten to whatever that plan of finance looks like, but we are, that's what we need, the time and effort to work on for you so we can bring you something very coherent and comprehensive that you all can decide, I have enough information to actually make a very good decision. And we would never want you to do that otherwise.
And I guess that's where I was headed with that, Rob, is that I know that you're really at the beginning stages of your job. And so I wanted to make sure that, number one, that the public understands that, and there's a lot more work to be done before we can really get to the point where we can judge what the future's going to be. As I told you before, years ago, I was involved, and anybody can look this up, the City of Industry, Sheridan Resort, and they did a public-private partnership with Sheridan, the City of Industry did, and with their convention center. And so I've had the ability to watch this process go all the way through. And so right now, your work has just started. And so I know there's a lot of work left. There's a lot of questions that are unanswered. And really, for us to do the best job for the public, we have to go through and make sure a lot of those questions are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Roy. Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rob and Elsie, for preparing us. And this is exactly what we're at right now, right? We are trying to make the best decision possible for the voters to eventually decide on this. But if we don't have all our ducks in a row, how, you know, can we expect, you know, the citizens to say, you know, this is a project that I can get behind it? If you don't have what you need to move forward from, like my fellow councilman Hernandez always says, you know, you have to be ready. You don't want to be waiting on this money and sitting, I mean, that money to be sitting somewhere and then not have the plans ready to go. So I don't understand where all this is coming from, but I support it. I mean, of course, I would like for it to be cheaper, but, you know, hey, who doesn't, right? But I will definitely be supporting this, and I hope my fellow councilmen do as well.
And you're right, time is money, and the longer we wait, it's just multiplying more the cost of construction if it ever goes that, to that point. So the amount of work that we could do in advanced planning right now would definitely help should voter election be on the ballot that is in November be successful, which is a major source of funding for a potential expansion project or renovation, even including deferred maintenance. You know, all those items are funding through that funding source of Type A. So all these elements would definitely help us, having Hunden as our continued consultant to take us and walk us through every step of the way and make the best strategic decision at council, including coming in here in person and providing more briefings. That's all part of this process.
Thank you. Councilman Barrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm lost in my buttons. Hey, I'm a little confused, just for one thing. Could you do me a favor and move that little pinata?
Little meal.
And maybe move, no, move them both out of the way because I can't see Peter. Peter and I are, and the other one right there too. Thanks, Dan, thank you. Much better, much better. Maybe I need to sit up higher, you know, since I'm five foot nothing. Anyway, I know we're talking a lot about OVG, who I'm not a huge fan about, but this is for Hunden.
Right, that is correct.
Okay, so...
One is operations and one's a totally different project.
Yeah, yeah, so I just want to be clear that for the public, that this is about extending the Hunden contract. Now, has, I guess for my colleagues, I can see where they're coming from, they just want to make sure, how, do we know how many more extensions that we're gonna? I support this, by the way, I'm going to, let me purpose with that. Are we anticipating additional extensions and how far this is going to go? And I'll digress. I remember, you know, years ago when I was on the RTA board, we were looking at, we started out with a $50,000 study that turned into another $300,000 study and then another, it was going to, at that point, the, a lot of the policymaking bodies were getting frustrated because there was no clear end. So I would just ensure that we know where we're going and where it's going to go. I mean, I would, in this, I think that would ease the public's mind. And so that way, we do that. Do we have any idea? Or, Rob, do you have something you might want to interject with?
Yeah, if it's okay. It's a perfect question, and we would just know that the reason this is coming to you today and not six weeks ago is because there's been a lot of discussion behind the scene by the city manager and staff and us. What is the least you can do to get us prepared for after the November vote and beyond that so that we're not spending good money after bad, right? We don't want to overspend. Our job is, A, to prepare you for whatever's next, and then if there is a decision by council to move forward with a project, to actually help get it built. Like, B, essentially internal project management, extension of staff to get to a ribbon cutting on the whole shebang, whatever that shebang is that you all decide. And so we are not in the business of trying to do a million studies. The study part is sunsetting, and we're moving into actually project execution, but like project advanced planning before you get to execution. So we don't know if we're going to execute until you all decide and after things happen in terms of funding. So we're just doing sort of that advanced planning to get to a point where we know enough so that you can vote on something. And then once that happens, then we're all about execution. We want to get you to a shovel in the ground and a ribbon cutting a couple of years after that.
And thank you, Rob. But as Councilman Pusley says, that's, what is it, a $3 answer to a $25 question? I'm with you, I'm with you.
Sorry.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is that I think you would have the public a little bit more understanding, you know, because obviously we just came through a budget process and that confidence is somewhat volatile, not volatile, but uncertain. But I do want to say that, I just want that to be clear, that if that way, there's a flow chart of where we're going. If this happens, I mean, God forbid this fails. I said, if it fails, then where do we go from there? So I just think that that would, that would help the council and the public understand, where's the flow chart of where we go.
Right, admittedly, we don't have that in our materials today, but we'll get you that, Councilman, to show what has happened, where could we go? To include, Rob touched on it, his request for...
And mind you, this, I think he's the glue in the whole situation.
He is absolutely correct on that, and I told him that as well up in a tour we did recently. But Rob suggested even more services, as he just mentioned, but we have some of that expertise in-house, so this is a reduced scope of work for him. And similarly, he can take us, we could hire him to do everything if the election passes, but some of that stuff we can self-perform. So we'll show you, we don't have it today. We're going to get you the answer. We're not answering your question right now. We'll get it to show what happens, what could we buy, what can we do in-house, and how long does it last?
Okay, and then, mind you, and I don't mean this, I'll say it, I'm just going to say it, I'm not confident in what we have available in-house. And I think the public, you know, and I know, you know, just as the individual who speaks frequently before public comment, individual that makes disparaging remarks, that kind of sending remarks to us all the time, you know... of sending remarks to us all the time, you know, I think even, you know, even for the last four years, we've had some issues with regard to the management of the American Bank Center, and rightfully so. You know, we need to own up to that. And so, we need to acknowledge that we've got problems, and we got to fix them. And that's one reason why I support this contract so much. I was very critical of the way we handled the OVG procurement and how it was handled. I was very critical about the process with which we didn't communicate with our local vendors. In fact, I don't know if you probably remember, the mayor's upset with me because I stormed out of the executive session because I was really unhappy with how we had handled it and the procurement of it, and how we've been able to manage it. But I go back to, the reason I preface all that is because, and I was a little skeptical about Hunter, but they've done a great job. They've done an amazing job. They've introduced us to other partners, and when we went to Oklahoma City, you know, at first, I didn't want to go because I was just, I was a skeptic. But then, when I went and I saw the public-private partnerships that were done, that wasn't, doesn't work all that much different from a tour, it's just on a grand scale, and I started using comments, like I said, we need to be visionaries, we need to look at what they're doing in New Orleans, because their climate is different, and it's one that, it's also been, it used to be difficult to get to.
Right.
So I think that's the whole thing. We need to recognize that, we need to take our partners that are around the, around the country that understand that process and look at it from there. So I, just a couple of things to recap. Number one, this has nothing to do with OVG. Number two, this is hiring a highly qualified professional that's done this around the country, that knows how it's done, that has the contacts with other hoteliers and properties, that has worked with rodeos, obviously, they've worked in Fort Worth, Johnny, I'm looking for at least a nod, yeah? So they've worked for rodeos, what is it, they've worked in coastal communities, so I think they're a good fit, and I've been really pleased, and I think that, I wouldn't mind, you know, constantly, I mean, I'm not trying to make this an open checkbook, but I wouldn't mind more, more utilization from them, because I think they get it more than we do here locally, with your staff. And I think it would be advantageous for them to be engaged that much more. So for that, I support this, I think it's a great thing. Obviously, I went and testified, I think we need to expand, you know, I was skeptical from the beginning, but these guys really sold it for us. And I have, once again, kudos to the mayor and to them to put together that, because we were, we were losing in the legislature. And had it not been for the coordination with Chairman Hunter, with the mayor, you know, the mayor was basically saying, what do we need to do? And, you know, we all came together as a team, so I think that's the, that's the type of synergy that we need for a project like this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I need to start learning how to push my button quicker, because I'm at the end of the train here, but I won't belabor some of the same things, but, you know, Councilman Pusley and Councilman Hernandez, you know, they can certainly, you know, not, not support this, and that's fine. I do understand comments about, you know, Councilman Hernandez's comments about the hotel, and I think we did ourselves sort of a disservice back six weeks or so ago, when we talked about the repurposing, and we had that placeholder in there of $200 million for the hotel. I don't think that was, you know, needed to be in there, because it's so undetermined at this point.
And a lot of, the majority is actually from the private sector.
Yeah, but that wasn't clear. And so what we did six weeks ago was to create the mechanism, you know, to get to the point in November where we can, you know, hopefully get the voter support to repurpose it, and I asked in that, in that six weeks ago session, is, this is just creating the mechanism. We're going to have a chance to come back later on and see a whole lot more about what it's going to look like, what the partnership's going to look like, what the private-public's roles are in both of those. And so, again, that's where we are, but, you know, we're eight weeks away from the election. I would hope that we would have a whole lot better information to start communicating to our community than where we're at now.
It's about to happen.
It needs to happen.
It's going to.
Because-
There's a whole team-
Like you've had to interject several times today, Mayor, we've had to interject to correct infactual data to factual data. And so that's getting spread amongst the community. So with that being said, yeah, I think there's some issues with OVG historically, and hopefully they're improving, they're on that path, but that's really unrelated, in my opinion, to what we decided six weeks ago to repurpose it. We'd already hired Rob to go on this path with us. This is just a continuation of being on that path with him. So with all that being said, I support it.
Thank you, Councilman. Well said. Councilman Pusley.
Well, before my fellow council members beat up on me anymore, I just want to make a statement. Nobody has supported this more than I have. Mayor, you'll remember, I emailed you, text messaged you and Peter, a picture of the most disgusting plate of food I've ever seen in my life, and I've eaten some disgusting food before, from the ABC Center event, the Lincoln Day Dinner, that we hosted here for a whole bunch of dignitaries, and it was awful. And that was before OVG. And I said, we have to do something. Peter, how many conversations have I had with you about we have to do something with the ABC Center?
Right, you've had a lot, Councilman.
I mean, I, there's nobody in this room that has been a bigger champion of that. But I'm telling you guys something, and Mr. Suckley, you hit the nail right on the head, and Johnny said something the other day, just a few minutes ago, not the other day, just a minute ago, when he was speaking, that is the real key to this. This has everything to do with what's going to happen here in about 40 days, and that is, the people of this community are going to vote on this. And currently, I don't even have the information to go out and share with them when they ask me questions about, well, what about this, what about that, what about that? Nothing has been shared and discussed with this council about how we're going to do that, and how we're going to answer those questions. And so, I'm telling you, we're just out of a budget that the people are just now getting their hands around, and we're going to go offer them this quarter cent sales tax, which most of the people in this community, I will tell you, don't understand how that works. I've had one, more than one person tell me, well, why should I vote for that if we do away with it, then it's just one more tax I don't have to pay? And that's how they feel about that, and that's how they, you know, that's, they're thinking about this. So I'm telling you, if we don't do this right, we're going to get our hat handed to us. And what, and Councilman Barrera made up a great point, well, what do we do then?
Yes.
We start all over, or whatever, and I'm going to disagree. This has everything to do with management of that facility. I'm not going to support going in and spending millions of dollars on revamping this facility if the current management team that's running it, I have no confidence in. And the fact that every time I turn around, they're changing the formula of how they run that business over there. So those are my comments, and that's why I am concerned. So if we don't do this right, it's going to come back to haunt us.
Absolutely, Councilman, and I would say that we're finalizing the communication plan with all the materials that you just mentioned, and we'll go ahead and send it to all of council, and of course, put it out for the community.
No, it's not too late, and I guess this is, we have gone to, Peter, there is, you know, there hasn't been a briefing, but that's what we clearly need. There is, I don't, the comments of like, well, what are we doing, and I don't blame you for saying, well, what are we doing? We have 43 days to an election. There absolutely will be, and I've said it before, there will be a very strategic, very strong campaign. The campaign is about educating, because you need to know, how do I answer these questions? What exactly is going to happen? How, you know, what words do we use? What, all of those things, they're working on right now, and that has to come to council, and it is, it's coming to, or, I don't know if to council, or just you're going to send it to us. Well, I'll let you go, I'll let you, I'll let you come in, Peter, but I just want to make certain that everybody know, this isn't an initiative that is just being thrown out there and let's just all hope and pray, because you're right, Councilman Suckley, you're right, all of you are right. We have, this must be extremely strategic, the message has to be the same across the board, or no, it's going to be a mess, you know, in less than, you know, 50 days. So it's very important, and I would then, you know, shift over to you, because you are going to enlighten us with how it's coming forth, so we know what that looks like.
We have gone, the last six weeks, we've been working on the budget, but in between that, this council has taken three votes where it was a unanimous decision to move forward with this initiative, and each step of the way, a lot of material was presented to the council, but the community, who was here watching. Today, the beginning of the council meeting at 11:30, we presented several slides that summarized this initiative. That was at 11:30. Heather did that. It summarized the repurposing, it showed how we use the tax for two purposes today, and that would grow to five purposes, based on council's approval of those, to include airport incentives, parks, roads, and the convention center. So we're working on getting professional materials that will, one, educate the community and help them better understand it, we're also working on a website, and so a lot of that's coming. We know there's only 40 some odd days left, but the goal was to get this now, so that we can see if the voters will approve it, so we'll know what the financial pro forma will look like. We also know that the project finance zone is only one of five, I believe, in Texas, and the mayor and Councilman Barrera and others were instrumental in getting that approved, so we don't want to lose that state funding for this project as well. So that's what I was trying to say, Mayor, that we already have been sharing a lot of information with the council and through this last six weeks, and we just shared some today, again, the summary of it at 11:30.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Roy.
So, two points. You know, Mike, I just want you to know, number one, I wasn't beating you up. You're probably one of the smartest council members when it comes to looking at issues like this, and I do understand your concern. I think all of us, and so when I listen to everybody, and I listen to the emotion and the pace in which we're discussing this, everybody understands, and I agree with Councilman Suckley that, you know, we're worried, because we have to be able to have the talking points to move forward, because we are running out of time, and it is a very complicated matter. It's a complicated, and there's a lot at stake. So I'm going to let, you know, city staff's got to be able to do the things that they need to do to get us those talking points, or get the community those talking points, because it's ultimately the community that has to vote. And, you know, I think that that's, that's important, and time is running out. And my, my whole point, in terms of asking what percentage, where are we at, is exactly that. We've got a lot of work left to do, and there aren't any solid answers right now, for the most part, when it, because there's a lot of work left to do to be able to uncover those things. You know, one of the things that everybody stepped up, and we were miraculously, we were, this bill passed, but if the voters don't want this, then that doesn't mean necessarily that it goes away, it just means that we've got to look at other funds and we've got to reevaluate. And so, this process, it is a complicated process, and, you know, I don't want to give up on it, or I don't want to be negative on it, until we get, I want to be able to make an intelligent decision. And that's the most important thing, because I owe that to my constituents, is to make an intelligent decision, so that we do have all the information at some point in time. And that's where I think we're at. So with that, I support it, because we got a little bit of ways to work, but we are running out of time, and I think council has made that very clear.
Councilman, you're absolutely right, you know, the project finance zone does have a sunset period, and we need to be very strategic about making sure that we activate all the different levels. And part of that is data analytics, go ahead and provide a strategic plan and modeling, work with our bond counsel and finance team, and this is why we need the continued services from our consultant to help us through that process, and that's just one of multiple funding buckets. And so, again, here before today is an item for Hunter in order to continue the process, to take us through all those different moving parts.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, first off, let me say that I think OVG has been an improvement to what we had previously. And I didn't bring them up earlier, but I just wanted to mention that-
Thank you.
That I think they're, nobody's perfect, but I think-
And they're here in the audience.
Yeah, I saw them back there. But I want to say their improvement to what we had in the past, including the food, is better. Okay, that aside, my concern with this is that there's not any kind of restrictions or protections for what we say we're going to do, right? That's why I fought so hard to make sure we had at least 5% go to the areas we talked about, because there was no guarantee that we'd ever use it for that, we'd just say we're going to use it for that. So the same thing, and Councilman Suckley mentioned it, we mentioned it in some of the documentation, that there's a hotel, but what does that look like? There's no, there's nothing that we've approved, or framework that we've approved, that prevents us from paying for the majority of that hotel. Let me just state that clearly. I have no confidence that that would be the case. At this point, I'm actually not confident that I would support that, the repurposing of that funding, the way it's, the way we have it right now, based on what the information we have currently. I may actively vote, support against it.
Well, Councilman, that is your-
I understand that, I'm just stating it.
But you're saying it as if it's a threat. Every person up here can vote for or against it.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm stating it.
Okay.
Right? The last thing I want to say is that, the focus I've had is, and why I wanted, why I think this needs to be repurposed, is because we need the funding to fix the convention center. Okay? All I've seen from Hunter is expansion, and not, not addressing some of the design flaws that are in existence currently.
There is a remodel portion of the report-
Okay, but that wasn't what I said.
300-page document.
When they came, and we were given that short notice that they were doing the presentations over at the, at the American Bank Center, I went to that. I didn't get to do the whole thing, and that's where I saw the, where the-
It was a stakeholder engagement meeting.
Stakeholder engagement, and Johnny came in, and then we talked about how the designs didn't really work for Buck Days. And so, I hadn't heard anything back on that, as to whether that's going to be changed or going to be addressed. And there was no, nothing to address improvements of design flaws within the, within the American Bank Center. The whole thing was expansion and convention center hotel.
So there is some work that is being done as a result of these meetings that you just mentioned. Convergence Design is actually preparing the renderings based on the meetings that was held with the Chamber of Commerce, with Downtown Management District, with Buck Days, with OVG. Multiple lengthy meetings were held also with engineering consultants to make sure and address all those design flaws that you mentioned. But in addition to that, there was a part of the CIP plan, right now, does have approximately 16.9 million to address some of the more urgent deferred meetings and issues that we're seeing, and that we walked with council, with a couple of the members here. But that's just the beginning of it. There is so much more work, as you mentioned, this is not even addressing the bigger issues, but there is a report with an outside consultant for engineering to go ahead and take us through that sequency plan, along with a potential renovation that would address the issues with mechanical deferred maintenance building envelope. All those items will be addressed through those, because there is funding.
Okay, but we have none of that information, and to Councilman Suckley's point, we have an election in eight weeks, and we have none of that information.
Right, so-
We have nothing.
The election-
I haven't seen nothing, Councilman, we have a, we have a report that shows-
Well, I mean, here I am on council, and I'm supposed to have all this information.
You do, so we have-
And I'm not, I'm not confident that we have, we provided that information.
Okay, Peter, can you respond?
I'll just say, Councilman, we, so recently, the full city council did tour of the American Bank Center, and we see there's close to $70 million in deferred maintenance needs. What we don't have, to Councilman's point, and you're correct, Councilman, is the ultimate reconstruction, renovation, and expansion. We don't have that yet. Part of the contract agreement today is to help us get that, but there's no point developing it all if we don't have the funds to pay for it. So it's, one has to come before the other. So Rob Hunter's contract is going to help us get to that level, and the vote in November will fund it. If the vote fails, then there's no point spending money on how we would redesign the convention center or renovate it. So it's, it's kind of a delicate balance between what has to come first and second and so on. What we do have, the council has a lot of information on the current condition of the convention center. We have some renderings of what it could look like. We know, and we have said it, that it's not just expansion, it's renovation, it's taking care of $70 million of deferred maintenance, and then the expansion plans as well, and that's been shown. So there's some level, admittedly, we don't have the utopian level of data, I would agree with that, but we have to see, can we get it funded? And that's what, that's why we're here today, that's why council's taken three nine-zero votes to move it forward to the vote. voters in November. That's also why the state legislature approved only one of five project finance zones to help us in the funding, so, that's, that's my response, Mayor.
Thank you.
100, 300 million, 300 million. I, I know, I'm, I'm about done here, I, we, we've, we're going back and forth, and Mr. Pusley, do you have a different comment than, we have a motion, second?
Second.
We, Everett Roy, it's his district, thank you.
Yeah, we already had a motion in the second on the floor.
Yeah, we have, and it's two, what's the Roberts rules, Mr.?
So, we have a, a motion in the second on the floor, right? So, Councilmember Roy made the motion, and Mayor, you seconded, so, and we've done-
Call the question.
No, it was Councilman Hunter, it was Roy.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't second it, but I'm ready to.
Who else wants to speak? Does anybody else wanna speak on it? Are we finished?
I can call the question, everyone else has spoken twice for over five minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
I agree with that statement.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you.
Well, you just violated the rules of order, Mayor. You cannot call the question without a vote. Is that not correct?
A motion to recon- uh, so a motion to call the question requires two-thirds vote, that's why I was asking, does anybody else wanna speak?
No, there was nobody else there. And they, okay, well, let's, let's talk about Roberts rules. If you speak more than twice on the item, can you continue to speak?
Well, Roberts rule says you can speak twice up to 10 minutes each time, so, I mean, I'm pretty sure we've had-
'Cause we're going back and forth, and it's-
I'm pretty sure we've had, yes, ma'am, yeah.
You're pretty sure what, I'm sorry?
That certain people have, yes, that they've reached their limits, certain council members.
Okay, so are we in order? I don't wanna be out of order.
Yes, I mean, I think so.
Okay.
Okay, so the vote was all a except for Mr. Pusley.
Mr., no, Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, okay.
And Mr., okay, but now you need to change your vote then, sir, because you didn't say no. Are you voting no?
Well, I was, I was going to consider changing my vote to support this, but, you know, if I can't, if I'm not allowed to say what I wanted to say to close this out, then I may not.
So, did you, are you voting, Mr. Hernandez is the only one who voted no. Did you, on the vote, on this vote?
No, I voted no too.
You did, okay, I didn't know that.
I was trying to make clear clarification of what we were doing.
Well, go ahead. Councilman Pusley, go ahead, let's make sure, I wanna make sure, this is a very important vote, a very important vote. So, go ahead. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to, to tell you, and also, this, this is, this line of concern is not directed at you, I want you to understand that. And number two, to show you how committed I am to hoping that this works, you know, several years ago, not several years ago, probably four years ago, the American Heart Association withdrew their banquet from the ABC Center because of the poor management and service they were receiving. I've been on bending knee for the last two years trying to convince them to go back, and they have now agreed to have their black tie event, the Heart Ball, at the ABC Center. And I hope we take advantage of them coming back, and the NAACP pull their Martin Luther King Day out of that facility for the same concerns, and I'm hoping we can convince them to go back. But to show you my commitment, I went on bending knee as the executive director of the American Heart Association and asked for that, to go back to the ABC Center. And so, I want you to know I'm committed to this and committed to making it better, but I can't go out and clear conscience and, and convince my constituency, and I represent a large constituency, a large constituency of people from one end of this city to the other. And I want you to know that I am committed to it, but I have to have the interest to be able to do that.
Absolutely, we'll provide that.
And so, this is not directed at you or anybody else, this is just expressing my concerns about this. And, and so I went to the Heart Ball, the Heart Association so many times that now they've appointed me to the board of directors.
Good. Good luck. Um, are they coming back this year?
Yes, yes.
It's a big deal.
What's the date of that event, Councilman?
Uh, February, isn't it? February, well, yeah, it's, it's around Valentine's Day. It's a big, it's a very big, big event, huge. Wow.
Two years I've been in the do.
Good.